Good evening, everyone. Just want to let you know we will be starting shortly. We're just taking a quick break. We should be starting the public meeting in about three to four minutes. Thank you.
Bless you.
Hey, Bill.
Yes.
I was saying hi to the other bill. Sorry.
Bill, how are you?
Lieutenant Bill.
All right, I was muted. It's my fault.
All right.
Yeah.
Is everyone here? Bob, are you here?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I'm here. Just had you unmuted.
All right, so I'd like to call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I want to welcome everyone to our March 2021 Board of Supervisors Business Meeting, and I wanted to introduce everyone to our new supervisor who has filled the vacant seat that we had. It's Tim McAvoy. And welcome, Tim. He was sworn in this past Thursday, and we look forward to working with you for the next several months.
Thank you, Martha.
Okay, the overview of the virtual meeting protocols, EJ.
Yes, this is a public meeting. It's been advertised. The meeting is being recorded using the GoToWebinar platform. All attendees are in listen-only mode, which means you should be able to see us and/or hear us. We do have one supervisor who's audio-only tonight, but you should be able to hear everybody. We cannot see or hear you. However, you do have the option to participate either by submitting public comments or questions using the question feature on the GoToWebinar platform. So I would ask that if you have any questions or comments, type them in. We will monitor the question box and read them at the appropriate time. If it's a question or comment on a specific agenda item, we will address it at that time when we get to that item on the agenda. If it's a general question or comment on a non-agenda item, we will address it at the end of the meeting during the public comment section. And I would ask that you please include your name and address in any written comments or questions. Thank you.
Thank you, EJ. I also wanted to mention that we did have an executive session this evening, as well as an executive session at our February workshop meeting where we discussed personnel issues, potential litigation, and potential land acquisition. So moving on to our consent agenda, acceptance of the minutes of the Board of Supervisors for February 3, 2020, our business meeting, and the February 18, 2021 workshop meeting, acceptance of reports, all departmental, committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of February 2021. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, and I'm going to do a roll call here. Tim, unfortunately, you can't vote on this one. So Susan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Okay, the treasurer's report and payment of bills for the period ending February 28, 2021, and consideration of acceptance of the treasurer's... Oh, I'm sorry. I'll go through that after, EJ. You can do your report first. I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine. At the end of February, as of February 28, the general fund balance, sorry, the general fund balance was $3,053,270, which represented an increase of about $65,000 from the month of January, and it's an increase of about $327,000 from the end of February last year. The Capital Roads Fund saw a decrease due to the first payment on the new loader that was made, and the Liquid Fuels Fund also decreased due to all of our snow removal expenses. We had $230,000 budgeted out of liquid fuels for snow removal costs, and we have now exhausted that budget, which means any remaining costs will come out of the general fund budget. I also wanted to know on the liquid fuels that we did just receive our 2021 allocation on Monday. We were informed back in the fall that we would be receiving about $271,000. Our deposit was a little over $279,000, so about $8,000 more than what we were anticipating. And all other funds saw an increase for the month of February. Through the end of the month, we've spent about 11% of our budget and have received about 11% of our budgeted revenues. Other than that, I reviewed the bills, about $264,000 in general fund bills, but out of that, $40,000 is for salt and about $50,000 is for snow removal. So with those removed, we're below our normal monthly average. Everything's in good order, and I would recommend paying the bills.
Okay, the consideration of acceptance of the treasurer's report and approval to pay the bills. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any comments or questions from the board? EJ, is there any comments or questions from the public?
There are not.
Okay, I will do a roll call here for your vote. Tim, how do you vote?
Can I vote on the February budget?
Yes.
I vote in favor, aye.
Okay, Susan?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. EJ, I will be available to sign checks if you need me. Just text me and let me know. If anyone else is available too, that would be great.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, two-minute reports for liaisons. Susan, do you have anything?
I do not.
Okay, Mark, do you have anything?
The PACEA, Phoenixville Area Clean Energy Alliance, they came to the regional planning committee meeting, and they talked about, they have business partnerships. They didn't get the grant that they were going for and we signed on for. They're going to try and go into the next grant round with the county to get that and move forward with an energy planner, but they're trying to work on business partnerships right now to offset costs.
Okay, anything else?
There might be a fourth municipality added in there, so we might have lower costs on them. That'd be great, so.
Oh, good. Awesome. Bob, do you have any two-minute reports?
Nothing to report.
Okay, the only two-minute report that I have is that the Schuylkill Township real estate tax bills went out in the mail. I know I received mine. I don't know if everyone else received theirs. If you have not received your bill, I would give it another week or two. I would contact Aaron Kern. His contact information is on our website. And just a reminder for residents, not receiving the bill does not mean you don't have to pay it. You do have to pay it. So again, if you didn't receive your bill, please do contact Aaron. So two-minute reports from the board, and I think that's it. And EJ, do you have some two-minute reports?
I do, just a couple of quick ones. One, we have been monitoring for several months now, maybe almost a year now, the deteriorating situation on Valley Park Road in front of the fire station, and we've been in talks with PENDOT, primarily the chief had been in talks with PENDOT to get it addressed. Some temporary solutions have been made, and we were informed this week that they would be out there to pave it and permanently fix it. Is that right, chief?
Yes, as of right now, it hasn't been done yet.
But we have received a lot of calls and complaints, and so I just want to remind residents that Valley Park Road is a state road, so we don't maintain it, we don't fix it, but we have been, like I said, in pretty much constant contact with PENDOT going back to last spring when the situation first started deteriorating, and we're glad to finally see some action on that. So thanks to the chief for really staying in touch with PENDOT. Seems like you've been calling them almost every week for like the past 10 months to get an update on it. And then the last thing-
Yeah, that's a pretty bad, that's a pretty bad pothole there, too.
It's more than a, it's like a gully. It's a-
Like a single.
It's French.
Okay.
Well, and especially because with the new construction on Route 23, Valley Park Road's going to be the detour out, so they need to make sure it's drivable. They're going to be sending more traffic down it. And the only other update I had was just, February was a very busy month in terms of winter operations for our road department and police department, first responders, and we have some nice weather in the forecast right now. I don't think we're out of the woods yet, but I do want to just, you know, kind of announce and recognize our road crew and police department for a job well done dealing with a very heavy month of snow for February.
Yeah, so let's hope we get no more this year. So yes, they did a great job, and kudos to everyone. Thank you. Is that EJ?
Yes.
Okay. More discussion items, old business update, the COVID-19 update, and township operations protocols, EJ.
Thank you. Not much has changed. The township building remains closed to the public. All meetings are virtual until further notice. You know, some of the restrictions were relaxed or loosened this week by the governor on travel and on safe travel and on also indoor gathering limits. We're not at the point yet, though, where it's given the size of our facility, where it's safe and feasible to resume in-person meetings, but we are continuing to monitor and continuing to encourage everyone who can to get the COVID vaccine. Other than that, we're continuing to monitor and track all township costs associated with COVID-19, and we'll continue to share updates on the website and the Facebook page and the constant contact email as we get them.
Okay. Update, the Paul Lemon Drive stormwater... Oh, I'm sorry. Did anyone have any questions about that? My apologies. Okay, update, the Paul Lemon Drive stormwater management project. Again, EJ.
This is a quick one, and it's good news. I reported last month that we were directed to conduct a Phase 1 bog turtle assessment because when we submitted the PINDY, we got a potential hit for bog turtle. We had an environmentalist go out there and conduct the assessment, and no bog turtle habitat was detected in the area, which means we will not have to move on to Phase 2, which means we should not have any limitations on our construction window. So that was a big potential obstacle for this project that is no longer there. So that's the only update I acknowledged in here, so.
Okay, good. And again, update, the Route 23 Valley Forge Road road closure. This says police chief. So EJ, you get to have a break.
So we found out this kind of late in the game. They never notified us about it until I saw the signs go up. We wound up, they were having a meeting down 123 that same day, so I was able to talk to them. It's not a full closure. It's Pico's putting a new gas main in which keeps leaking. We've had numerous complaints over the last few years about some gas leaks down there. So they're replacing the pipe from east side of the bridge all the way down to the post office. But they're doing it in sections. So the first section is from the bridge to Paulings Road, which PENDOT told them they can't close the road. It's going to be a one-lane flag, you know, detour around for that. From there, between the Paulings Road and Country Club, that gets a little tricky. When they're up in front of the commons, they'll be able to still flag it, and then once it gets past that, it narrows down too much, then the road will be closed. All the businesses are guaranteed to have access. The company doing it is General Asphalt Paving out of Philadelphia, and they sent letters out to all the people that will be affected. There may just be, they may have to go around, you know, a little detour. The detour is Valley Park Road, which has some issues with it. There's a weight limit and a truck length limit on the roads. Nobody thought about that, and then, so they're either going to come up with another detour like they had for when we were doing the bridge, which will put the trucks over to 422, and they're talking about bringing them down through Phoenixville, which has some issues with that, but they have to keep it on their roads. They can't detour on our roads. So it'll be shut down in sections. It's not going to be the whole length of 23 at any given time, and they have to restore the road before they can move to the next session. That's the good news. The bad news, this is supposed to last probably through October or November. Like I said, though, we've had many gas leaks in front of the Freedom's Foundation, 23 and Country Club, and down in front of the post office, so they know the pipe's bad, and they're going to be replacing that. And then eventually, I think they said they're going to go from the post office down to 252. So that's pretty much the update that I have. PENDOT's supposed to get back to me and let me know what their decision is on the trucks. But right now, there is no physical detours, just one-lane construction site.
Okay, if we have, if you do receive updates, I have a request that you would let, you know, EJ and Madeline know so that we could send out emails and do a Facebook post just to let the public know if there's any major changes from what you just said. I know, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, for the general public, there's not going to be. It's just going to be more for trucks. So they're going to let trucks go down Valley Park Road. They got to cover their signs up. If not, then the everything will be as normal for, you know, the general public.
Okay.
But I'll keep you informed now.
Okay, great. All right, EJ, do we have any public comments on any of those discussion items?
No, we do not.
Okay. New business, consideration of the release of the Phoenixville Area School District ARLE grant escrow in the amount of $60,000. EJ, do you want to talk about this before we make the motion?
Sure, yeah. This is kind of a long time coming. This escrow was set up back in 2015 as part of the traffic intersection improvements at the intersection of Pot House Road and Charlestown/Bridge Street near where the forest is. The township got an A R L E, which is Automated Red Light Enforcement, grant for the improvements at that intersection. The need for those improvements was triggered by the school district's construction, so the school district was required to put up $60,000 in an escrow as kind of collateral for the township's grant application. Additionally, the agreement dictated that the school district had to contribute $60,000 directly towards the cost of its construction itself. So they put $60,000 in escrow in 2015. The township applied for the grant, got the grant. The project was, the project went out to bid. It was completed. The school district in January 2018 did contribute $60,000 directly to the township to offset the cost, so they satisfied the obligation to that agreement, and this money has basically been kind of sitting around in escrow ever since. We do not hold the account, but our sign-off is required in order for the money to be released back to the school district.
If I can add one thing, the reason for the escrow is to make sure that a grant is not given under circumstances where the township doesn't have the money to pay its percentage. So it was their money at all times, just to make sure that the deal could go ahead without running out of money at the end. So we're just returning their money to them.
Yep. Okay. All right, so I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
It was, wow, take your pick. One was Tim and the other one was Bob.
We'll give that one to Tim. He's got to earn his keep.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay, so the motion's been made, and it's been seconded. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Now, are there any comments or questions from the public, EJ? No? All right, Tim, how do you vote?
Aye.
Susan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Okay, discussion, the Schuylkill Township Police Department accreditation proposal, the consideration. You know what? Why don't we have the discussion first, and then I'll make the motion after that. So who would like to start this conversation? This says police chief and police lieutenant, so I'm going to turn it over to one of the two of you.
I'll take that, Martha.
Okay, great.
I'll take any questions, but I'll give a brief overview of what it involves. We have a current policy manual that was good for its time, but it needs to be updated, needs to reflect current realities, the way we do our jobs. I'll give an example from this past year with the current trend towards something we always did, but now it's being codified, de-escalation, duty of officers to intervene if they see another officer doing something that they shouldn't be doing. The process of accreditation will result in a completely new policy manual that's up-to-date, current, and reflects how we do our jobs, how we should be doing our jobs. Each officer will get a copy of that, each policy as it comes out. They'll have to read it, sign off digitally that they understand it, and so that everybody be on the same page. They'll also each get a digital copy of that manual so that they'll have access to it at all times. I don't see Madeline Lewis on, but she's from the Rogers Group. EJ, do you see her on?
I'm here.
And Jennifer is as well. At this time, and let her run with it from there. The Rogers Group has been highly recommended by numerous departments in Chester County that have used them, rave about the whole process of going through it. Generally, it takes about a year. If you do it on your own, we could be looking at three years. So it's a significant improvement, and I think the work product will be much superior to what we could do on our own. Madeline?
Thank you, Lieutenant. First, thank you guys for having us here tonight. We really appreciate your time. Just a little bit about myself, and then I'll let my partner speak. My name's Madeline Lewis. I am a full-time patrol officer with the Lower Marion Township Police Department in Montgomery County. So I've been there for a little over eight years. I am our full-time accreditation manager, so I oversee both our PLEAC accreditation, which is the state accreditation, which is what we're talking about here, and also our international accreditation, Kalia accreditation. Top of that, I do some grant writing for our department, training, and other kind of admin stuff for now. And then I'll let Jen introduce herself real quick.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Jerry. I am currently with the Newtown Township Police Department. As they're a full-time accreditation manager, managing both the Kalia and PLEAC programs. I am also the treasurer, I'm sorry, the secretary for the Pennsylvania Coalition on Accreditation.
So Jen and I both are managing consultants for the Rogers Group. So we've expanded into Pennsylvania. They're very big in New Jersey. They do a large majority of the agencies in New Jersey for accreditation. We came over into Pennsylvania a few years ago. Jen and I are both assessors for the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association, so we work with, we join forces with the Rogers Group to kind of start that consulting here in PA. So in terms of accreditation consulting and what this project would look like, it's twofold. For that first part is there's policy development, right? So ensuring that the policies of the agency are in line with accreditation standards, best practices, and are 100% specific to this agency. This isn't a boilerplate policy that you're getting that just is kind of generic to any agency. This is very specific to this agency and the way that they operate, but again, making sure that they're in line with best practices and all the appropriate SOPs for the standards. So the other thing with that is all of our policies are written by subject matter experts. So every single person that writes one of your policies, your use-of-force policies, your subsidies, your policies, all of these people have been proven subject matter experts in court, and the insurance that we carry, STRG, if for any reason one of our policies got called into play when it came to litigation, we would be there to then go ahead and testify in court as to why we wrote the policy that way. The subject matter expert would be there and say, these are the best practices. This is why we write it this way. So again, that's that first half, the policy development, right? And again, it keeps the agency in line with all those current best practices. And then we move towards the accreditation piece. So once we have all those policies in place, we essentially, the police department is welcoming a third party to do an audit of them and saying, yes, we are in line with best practices, and we want the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association to come in, and we'll verify that we are doing what we're saying we're doing, right? So that we have to pull those proofs of compliance. So there's about 136 standards for PLEAC accreditation, and you have to show two proofs of compliance per year, per standard. So Jen and I would help pull those proofs of compliance, label them, highlight- label them, highlight them for the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association. And when they come in at the end of this period, this one-year period, we would be there with the chief and the lieutenant to make sure that everything went smooth, to make sure that that accreditation is obtained. As the lieutenant touched on, one of the biggest thing about accreditation is that it's a constant self-evaluation. What we find with a lot of agencies, so they develop these policies, let's say, and they're good for three, four, five years, and then you kind of rest on your laurel. And unfortunately, in police work especially, it's a high liability, low, low risk, low probability, but high liability issue, right? So God forbid you find yourself in a very high-risk either pursuit or if you have issues, you know, with your use of force, that's where you're gonna run into some litigation issues. And this makes you constantly reevaluate all of those SOPs, those procedures that you guys are using, but also those policies. And again, like the lieutenant spoke about, keeps the officers informed by making sure that they are constantly issued these policies, they have to sign off on these policies, they have to sign that they understand them. As well as there's some training components, like the lieutenant touched on, a lot of in-house training when it comes to things like de-escalation, a prohibition on chokeholds, all these things that you've seen come out this past year. Accreditation, any accredited agencies were already in line with these standards because they were just best practices. So that, that's a little bit about my spiel for accreditation and kind of the project policy writing and the accreditation piece. I'm sure there's, there's tons of questions and I'd love to answer any I can.
Okay, does anyone from the board have any questions for Madeline or Jennifer?
So I do, this is Susan. So what does the training look like? Other than giving the officers the policies, what kind of training are you doing with them?
So the Rogers Group itself, in, in, in addition to the accreditation, we do offer a training component. But a lot of the trainings that the accreditation requires can be done in-house and constructed however the lieutenant or the chief sees fit. So it is about touching on de-escalation techniques, right? So if they have, they decide to send one of their officers to de-escalation, train the trainer, they can come back and teach that. It's just to make sure that they're constantly doing it. Again, we do officer, offer additional trainings that we could assist with. But they can do it in-house, they can do all their training in-house, however the chief and the lieutenant sees fit. The thing is, is most departments don't end up doing this. So we, we'll go ahead and, and we'll say, again, they won't be, they won't do any de-escalation techniques, any duty to intervene tech, uh, training. The lieutenant or the chief, if they chose to, could do either PowerPoint in-person trainings, but something to keep it constantly fresh and, and in line with, with the best practices.
If I could.
If this doesn't include any training, I mean, for the thirty thousand dollars we're paying, you're not going to do any training?
No ma'am, no training would be included with this. This is a hundred percent policy development, making sure those policies are in line, again, with what the agency's doing and those standards, as well as pulling two proofs of compliance for a hundred and thirty-six different standards, ensuring that they are in line with all of those standards and then also being there for the mock assessment and the assessment when the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association comes in.
The, the, the policy would generally require us to do the training.
Yes, sir.
Follow the train of thought. And we also just recently signed off with Police One, which offers virtual training in all the different things that we've just discussed.
So Bill or Chief, have you looked into whether, I mean, honestly, thirty thousand dollars for just policies seems like a lot. Have you looked into whether we could get the policies someplace else and then maybe put that money towards training?
No, not really. If, if you, the other model, the only other model to follow to achieve this would be if you tried to do it in-house and everyone I've talked to, it's taken in excess of three years of a full-time officer solely dedicated to doing this, to achieve this, which is far in excess of, of the money that we're talking here.
And that even just.
Phoenixville, for example, Lieutenant Marshall did it, it took him about three years. And if you multiply his salary by three years, that's what it costs Phoenixville to do it. He devoted pretty much all of his time to doing that.
To drafting the policies?
To, to achieving exactly what Madeline talked about. And very fondly with Brian, the, the work product, quite frankly, of one person isn't capable of achieving the standard, the level that, that this group will be able to impart. As Madeline discussed, you have subject matter experts that are helping develop and formulate each of these policies and their particular area of expertise. If you have one person doing it, there is no way that they're, like, if you're asking me, there's no way that I have the expertise across that broad range to achieve and to deliver the product that they'll deliver for thirty thousand dollars.
And, and just to be clear, other than the policies, and I guess pulling these things to show we're in compliance in a hundred and thirty different ways, there's nothing else that's part of the thirty thousand?
No.
No.
Well, I'm sorry, Madeline, I'll just, real briefly. It's gonna reduce the liability for the police department, it's gonna reduce liability for all of you if we adhere to a set of standards that's accepted in court as best practice. And Madeline, you, you had something you wanted to say?
Yeah, and so I just want to be very clear that the, the policy writing of it, while a huge part of this, is only a small piece of this whole project, which is that accreditation and, and achieving that accredited status with the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association. So for instance, most insurance carriers, Divid is a large one in the area, they will give a decrease in their liability insurance. And what they, the reason they do that, and they're actually pretty overzealous about it, even sometimes giving grants to agencies to, to, to start this accreditation process, is because they see a reduction in losses in general with their accredited agencies. But even when they have to do payouts, they're seeing a reduction in costs, usually because it's cheaper to pay the person than to actually go through with litigation. They're also seeing a reduction in other things, such as officers using disability or going out injured. So while policy is very important, I want to be clear that this department is seeking an accredited status, which in the state of Pennsylvania is, is a, is a, is a really big thing for them to be doing. And also, they're voluntarily saying, we're gonna open ourselves up to this audit, to this transparency with the public to show that we're in line with these best practices. And this is something that is going to be coming down the pike sooner rather than later with just the way things have gone in law enforcement, you know, if we're being very honest. And allowing our public to have that transparency in how we operate and, and really doing it, I think is, is something to be, you know, to be very proud of that you're, that you're seeking this. And they're having the opportunity to do it now while it's still in their control, because eventually it's going to be mandated. So I think, I think, again, Lieutenant and Chief, I think it's great that you guys are seeking this accreditation. It is a, a huge step in the right direction. And like I said, the policy is, is a, is a very important component of it, but the whole bigger picture of accreditation is, 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 is what we should be looking at.
And have you determined how much we would save in insurance if we get the accreditation?
So we can't say that because it, it does vary from insurance carrier to insurance carrier. I would say that Chief or the lieutenant or township's or whoever should on your side look at talking with the insurance carrier and seeing what your reduction would be. But unfortunately, we wouldn't be able to say, say that, that would be a conversation for you all to have.
Yeah, I, I was thinking kind of the same thing and I was kind of wondering if we could just look into those kind of questions during, during the next month and come back to this in our next meeting.
EJ, we are with.
If EJ can reach out and ask those questions.
We are with Divid currently for the workers' comp trust only, not for our liability insurance. However, for our liability, we did reach out quite a few months ago to ask about potential discounts for accreditation. They weren't able to give a number, but they did say that we would see a premium discount on the police professional liability line if the department was accredited. They basically just said, we can't tell you what that will be until, until, you know, the, the process is complete and then we would reevaluate the policy.
And I can. Madeline, can you tell me more about how the process is transparent to the public? So you come in and say, for example, they're doing twenty things wrong. Is that a report that you issue that the board would get or the public would get to look at?
No, so what I, what I mean by transparent is accreditation in and of itself allows the public to have a better understanding of what the department's doing. So right now, the way that the town or the department operates isn't necessarily held to any standard, right? But with Pleak accreditation, there are certain standards that you have to reach and the public can rest assured, knowing that you, for instance, have a de-escalation policy in place and you train on it. That you train on your pursuit policies and stopping procedure, these are all high-risk liability items, right? That your use of force, your training on your use of force policy.
Can I just, can I just ask you though, you keep saying train on this, train on that, but you're, no, no training is included as part of this, you're just gonna give us the policy, then the chief and the lieutenant are gonna have to figure out training on all of these items you're mentioning, am I right?
So, yeah, they, like they said, they decided to go with Police One and they'd be doing the training that way, so that's already in place. But again, right now, there's nothing to say that they do that anyhow, right? So if you don't go with accreditation, who's, who's, who's holding this department and saying, hey, we're gonna make sure that we are doing these things, either the trainings or making sure that these policies are up to date? So for instance, bias-based policing is a big one. I don't know what's in place right now to make sure that they're in line with best practice when it comes to fair and impartial policing. However, when they go through accreditation, they'll have to take a look at all their numbers in terms of traffic stops, traffic data, interaction with the public, analyze that information and make sure that they're not missing anything that they haven't seen. So making sure that they're fair and impartial policing, their, their stops are in line with the public that they are serving as well. So for instance, their pursuits, they have to do a, a review of to make sure that they were in line with best practices for themselves or the state as well. So there are some analysis that are also involved there. Evidence is a big one. With accreditation, they're required to do annual audits, annual inspections, inventories as well. Evidence is where we find a lot of issues, right? So that's where a lot of departments struggle with accreditation. This is going to make sure that they're meeting certain standards. So aside from the training, yeah, there's a whole bunch of other stuff. Again, that bias-based policing is a big one right now.
And if they find that they're not, you find that they're not meeting like, say, thirty of the things, do you help them fix that? Is that part of the process you would go through and help them correct whatever process we're doing wrong or?
Yes ma'am, so yes, we will, we will walk through with them what needs to change. So the first thing that we do is what's called a gap analysis, right? So we ask a whole bunch of questions about the department, it's about a thirty-page questionnaire about what they're doing, what their SOPs are. We come through, we do a walkthrough as well, we take a look at the evidence, see where they currently stand, right? It gives us an idea of where they are and where we need to be to get towards accreditation. Anything that we haven't met, we're gonna work with them to make sure that they're in line with accreditation. So we will make sure that their evidence room, whatever needs to be done there, that we walk them through the process of getting it in line with accreditation standards. So yeah, we, that is absolutely part of it.
One minor question on my end, and this is either for you, Madeline, or for Chief or Lieutenant. When, when the policy, when the development of the policy manual is complete, does that then go back to the Board of Supervisors? Are they, are they the body that ultimately approves and puts that policy in place or is it just kind of like automatic? I would have, I, I don't want to speak for the chief, but I believe it has to go to the board for approval.
It does.
But that would be another piece of transparency, that would go through the public approval process where the Board of Supervisors would have a chance to review it and vote on it at a public meeting. Absolutely. I do have one, I do have one question from the, from the public as well, Martha, I don't know if you're ready to, to open that up yet or if you want to keep going with the board.
Um, I actually, I have a question myself. You know, you talk about having this electronic copy of the policy. Is this something that we would make available to the public? Or is this just part of the process, just approving it, making it transparent to the public? So for example, we have an electronic copy of it, could we put it on our website? Is that something that, that you would do or no?
So I, I can answer that. Public-facing documents is coming with the next iteration of Power DMS and what they're providing you already. We can certainly make any document that you want to be public-facing, public-facing. Knowing that sometimes, specifically for my agency, for Newtown Township, we have a, a rulebook or a playbook in there that you might not want to release to everyone because it's how to work an investigation. Those things I would not.
Okay.
It gives away trade secrets per se.
So that is certain, that's certainly a question for the chief and the lieutenant to decide how much they put out there. But yeah, I mean, what we have found is that a lot of the public likes for those policies that we can share that aren't, that don't need to be redacted or things like that. It's important for them to see the use of force policy and that it's in there that's saying that there's no chokeholds, right? So I think absolutely bias-based police policy, for instance, it's important to see that the agency is, is not only saying, hey, we're not gonna be biased in our practices, but they're also evaluating what they're doing on an annual basis. So I think if, you know, if that's something that you all are comfortable with, I think that extra layer of transparency is a great idea.
I mean, some of it's a officer safety thing, so in this manual have, like how we do warrants, how we do, you know, certain things that we just don't release that stuff to the public. Because I mean, they know our game plan, how they're gonna, you know, what we're gonna do, then, you know, it puts our guys in jeopardy.
Okay. Thank you. Tim, do you have any comments or questions? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
As far as the electronic copy of what is available to them, anybody with a smartphone can get on, as far as an officer goes, they can get on at any time of the day or night, look up the policy to make sure that they're following the right procedure. Sometimes that comes into play for things that are not handled very often.
Okay.
So Martha, right now, it's like a, almost a six-inch binder.
Yes, I've seen it, I've seen it, yes, you've shown it to me.
And the other thing this will do too for us is when there are changes that have to be made, they're tracked. So it's just, you're not just making a change, you can see what was there and what's been replaced.
Okay, Tim, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I, I like the, I like our using best practices, getting them in place in a twelve-month versus two or three-year period, if in fact that would be the case. I don't disagree, Susan, it's a lot of money. But in, in today's environment, I'm, I'm supportive of this concept, so I, I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Susan, do you have any other comments or questions?
No.
Mark, do you have any other comments or questions?
No.
Bob, do you have any other comments or questions?
Just that it sounds like your townships have already acted on this, do you have a list of other townships in the area that have already enacted this or started down this road?
Sure, yeah, what you can do is if you wanted to take a look at the PA chief's website and look up Pleak accreditation, they have listed every single agency that is Pleak accredited, accredited, so it's P L E A C. And again, that's with the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association, they have listed out every single agency. I want to say it's roughly around a hundred and twelve, hundred and twenty agencies. And what you'll find is it is very much clustered towards this Philadelphia metropolitan area, right? So further west you get, sometimes it isn't as, as prevalent. But most agencies in Montgomery County are accredited, Chester County is definitely headed that way, Delaware County is the same thing. But take a look there and you'll be able to see some of the agencies that, that are accredited.
In our area, Phoenixville is, Trudifferent is, West Whiteland is, West Town East Goshen, and those are some of the chiefs that I've talked to that highly recommended this group in particular.
Okay. That was it.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the board then?
What would it take for you, Chief and Lieutenant to shop around and see what other options are? I mean, this is no offense to the Rogers Group, we're just not familiar with you guys. And I just want to see like, see, see what other groups are doing around here to just kind of get a comparison. And if everything's in line, I'll, I'll feel much more comfortable going, say, say with you guys.
I can say, in terms of consulting for accreditation, it's gonna be difficult to find some, there aren't many. In terms of from this area, I would just like to point out that I'm a resident of East Vincent Township, so I'm not far at all. Jen herself is also from Chester County, we've spent our whole lives in Chester County. So, you know, I went to Westchester Area School District, went to Westchester University, raised my family here. So in terms of, you know, finding anybody a little bit more closer to home, you won't than Jen and I. I understand that the Rogers Group is from New Jersey, but we are, we are in your, your backwoods, so. But like I said. Um, but like I said, if you guys choose to look to somewhere else, um, there's, there isn't much out there, there's um, in this area. But just wanted to put that out there, so.
I would second that. I have done research in this area and there really isn't anybody that offers this level of hands-on timeline and also price that in this area. There's a couple of national companies that do it, but it's very, definitely not hands-on.
Yeah, there was one other group.
Touch on what the chief is, or what the lieutenant was saying there with hands-on. So those national agencies will give you that boilerplate policy that it's still, the lieutenant or the chief will have to put manpower into making it very specific to that agency. Um, when Jen and I make these policies, again, it's not only, it's completely in line with best practices and the standards, but it's very specific to the agency. We work tandemly, we work hand in hand with the chief, the lieutenant, um, and make sure that when they approve it, it is how they want it. It looks like uh, Schuylkill Township, it, you know, sounds like Schuylkill Township. Um, so it's a hundred percent up to, to their standard as well.
Okay, EJ, I think you said that there was someone from um, the public who had a comment or a question?
Yeah, there's two, two questions that have come in. Uh, the first is from Brad Carr, uh, one, two, three, seven, Laura Lane. This question is for Ms. Lewis. Do the protections from litigation involving the policy also extend to the officers if they are subject to litigation directly rather than the police department?
Uh, that would be the police department's, um, if the officer is being called into question, that would be their insurance. If it's our policies that are being called into question, that would be TRG's insurance, if that answers that.
Yeah, I think it's, I think so. Um, the next question is from John Maraz. Uh, based on the conversation, our current police department is not accredited. Uh, that's correct, we are not. Um, next question, will other companies provide the service and has the department reached out for other bids? Um, and how many hours will this group provide onsite? So why, maybe uh, Ms. Lewis, uh, if you can answer that last question about the hours onsite.
Sure. So that's a, a difficult uh, question to answer just because um, each agency needs something different. But uh, so for some agencies, uh, they don't need much hours onsite. For other agencies, Jen and I are there a lot. And whatever it takes to get this accreditation done is what it's going, is what's going to happen. So for instance, if we have to be there more, we're on the phone more with the chief and the lieutenant, if we're showing up more often, it's, there's no additional fee. Um, we, our purpose is to make sure that again, by the end of this, uh, we have everything in place to get you accredited. Uh, so even for instance, we've run into agencies that it's just taken a bit longer to get there, took longer for the twelve months, they wanted to extend it to fourteen months. We will work with you, there's no additional fee, we just want to see you get accredited through this process.
If I could just say at one point, I, I was asked a little while ago to determine the uh, procurement issue in regard to this, looked it up and did a memo, I think to the chief indicating that it's in the, in the same category as professional services, you don't need a public bid. And I'm not saying you don't have to put it out, but it's not required.
That is, I can speak on, that is correct. It would be professional services.
And just to the question of other potential bids, um, going back to the fall when we went through the budget process, the, the, the chief and lieutenant had uh, secured a proposal from a different company. I think it was called Lexipol, is that right? Uh, chief in the senate? And they're, and they're one of the national companies?
Yeah, it's a national company.
There's a very, there's no onsite assistance whatsoever with those companies. It's all, as Madeline and Jennifer said, it's boilerplate language, not tailored to our needs and who we are as a police department. Um, it's just, you're basically, it's cut and paste. And I don't, I don't think the end, end product would be helpful or improve the department and reduce our liability at the same time.
So, and to just expand upon that a little bit, um, in terms of seeking accreditation, uh, Lexipol gives you, and they blatantly say it on their website, they give you eighty to ninety percent of the policies needed for accreditation. So not only are they giving you boilerplate policies that the chief and the lieutenant would still have to modify and put manpower's in to make them specific to the agency, but you're still also missing ten to twenty percent of the policies that are needed for accreditation. Um, and again, in their fee, it doesn't include them pulling proofs of compliance and, and, and working with you to get accredited and making sure that you're accredited by the end of this progress, process. Moreover, a lot of what they're missing, their PA specific uh, statutes that we all have to be aware of as law enforcement officers. So the way we handle, um, for instance, PFA's domestic violence calls here in Pennsylvania is very different than the way in the laws, uh, laws are set up in other states. Um, so again, they're missing all those Pennsylvania specific um, statutes for, which are very important to, to what we do as Pennsylvania law enforcement officers.
Can I ask, does this guarantee that we'll get accreditation at the end of this?
Obviously, we can't guarantee, we can never guarantee anything. It's going to be a matter of whether, you know, how, how, how willing the chief is, the lieutenant is, uh, to seeing this through. Um, what I can say is that we've been able to get all the other agencies that we've been working with and it seems like the chief and the lieutenant are on board with this. Um, it seems like the police department, uh, knowing some of the gentlemen that work there as well, um, this whole thing is in line and, and that I don't foresee any hiccups, but I wouldn't be able to sit here and say a hundred percent that I can guarantee anything.
None, none of the other departments in Chester County that use the Rogers group have had any difficulty in getting accredited, if that answers the question.
All right, any other, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, the other thing, EJ, um, he, we had a discussion about this and um, there's stuff coming down the, the road where if you're not accredited, you're not going to be able to get certain grants um, to the federal government. So, I mean, that's.
Just to touch on that chief real quick, so I am the grant writer for my agency. I've been very successful for my agency in writing grants. The first thing I write in every single one of our grants is that we are accredited. Um, I've never lost a grant or not gotten a grant that I've applied for. When I, when I do that, um, it shows that you're not a liability, you know, that you're doing the things you're supposed to be doing. Uh, so it certainly helps in that aspect, but like the chief said, it could even um, hinder you if you, you're not accredited when it comes to those federal grants coming up soon.
Yeah, there was something in one of the PSAT's news bulletins from maybe last quarter that said some of the, some of the policy changes at the Department of Justice, um, were going to, you know, restrict eligibility for some future funding. And, and this is one of the areas that, um, for some of the programs, I mean, like Madeline said, it helps a lot if you're accredited, but for some you won't even be eligible with, without it. I don't know if those changes have actually been made yet, but they're, I think they're coming down the pike.
Any other gut feelings from the board that you want to talk about or? Comment one? Mark, you had made the comment that you thought maybe we should table this. Do you still feel that way?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind the, I wouldn't mind the time to look in, look more into accreditation and uh, just understand the whys. Uh, I, I know we've had a brief overview tonight, I'd like to look into it a little more. Uh, I mean, if the rest of the board is willing to move forward on the boat, I'm not going to stop you. But uh, um, my preference would be to table and uh, look into it more and just kind of see what's, see what uh, that all entails so that I have a better understanding of what's, what's coming, coming through.
Okay. Tim, your, your feel about tabling this to next month?
I, I would defer to the board. I, I'm comfortable with this. Do we have this budgeted by the way, EJ?
Yeah, we have, we have thirty-two thousand dollars budgeted. I think that was based off of the, the proposal that we got in the fall from Lexipol. But you know, at the time, the chief and lieutenant wanted to try to find another option because we weren't crazy about that proposal. Um, so this is under budget, um, it also has the option for the, you know, spreading the payments out over twelve months. So, you know, that would, given the timeline, it would actually push us into next year at, at twenty-five hundred bucks a month. But it is in the budget, um, and it's under budget.
Right.
And the price, the price does reflect a twenty-five percent discount that the Rogers group offered us.
Got it. If this were deferred thirty days for a board vote, um, would that be an issue from the police perspective?
I would just be concerned, I'll defer to Madeline and Jennifer, but in terms of the twenty-five percent discount, will that affect? I don't know if that would affect that or not. That's, that's, I'm, I'm not aware.
No, I mean, honestly, I, we, like I said, Jen and I are both from Chester County, we live right up the street. We want to, we would love to have Schuylkill Township on. If you all need, you know, another month to, to go over it, um, I think you'll find and, and, you know, I think you'll find that accreditation is in line kind of with uh, once you, once you get a bit of feel of it, um, that it's something that's needed, it's something that's coming down the pike. It's great that the chief and the lieutenant are trying to get ahead of this and get it done now. Um, so we'll happily be, obviously it can't, that, that discount can't last forever, but Jen and I would love to see Schuylkill Township Police Department be a client of ours.
Martha, given that feedback, I'm comfortable learning more over the next thirty days along, Mark.
All right, and um, Bob, are you in agreement with that as well?
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a good idea. We just, just scratched the surface tonight. I, another thirty days, I don't think would be a horrible thing, so sure.
Okay, all right. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm actually drawing a blank here. Our police liaisons are, who?
It's me and Bob.
Yeah, Susan and I.
Would um, would the two of you be able to take some time and sit down with um, Bill and, and, and um, Jim and Chief, I'm sorry, Lieutenant and Chief?
Not me and Jim.
Wrong Bill, like we have too many Bills here tonight, sorry. Um, with Lieutenant and Chief and kind of go through this. And um, yeah, I think we should table this until next month. And um, if you guys could take the time to, you know, sitting down and talking with them is, is not possible right now, but I think you guys understand what I'm trying to ask.
Yeah, we'd be happy to talk to Chief and Bill.
Okay.
And it may be if anybody on the board has particular questions, let us know, we'll work to get those before the thirty days.
Exactly. I was just going to suggest that and the, and uh, Tim and, and Mark and myself, if we have any questions, we could forward those to the two of you and then you guys could sit down and, oh, Harry, I'm saying it again, sit down and talk. And um, and then I think we should have this on our agenda for next month.
Well, as long as we're comfortable with them coming in to talk to us, so.
Okay.
It's not a problem.
Okay, all right, sounds good. And uh, Madeline and Jennifer, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you for having us.
Excellent. Thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
Okay, resolutions and ordinances, consideration of enactment of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh one, amending the Verizon franchise in Schuylkill Township. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and um, EJ, would you like to give a little bit of an overview of this? I know we have received some information in our packet, but um, just for public clarification?
Yeah, we, we have a cable franchise agreement with Verizon and with Comcast, which basically gives the franchise the right to provide cable service within our municipality and, you know, imposes some conditions on their ability to do so. But the main condition being that state law allows us to impose a franchise fee of up to five percent on the grocery receipts that, uh, of revenue that uh, Verizon brings in from all subscribers within Schuylkill Township. So the idea being, you know, we allow them to come in and put in the infrastructure to provide service to the township. They're making money off of it, we get a little bit of that money back. Um, so five percent is the maximum allowed by state law. We, our, our current uh, agreement, which was a ten-year agreement with a five-year extension and it was extended five years. So this agreement was going back since two thousand and six, um, is expiring in uh, October. Um, and we engaged with the Cohen Law Group, which is a law firm out of the Pittsburgh area that really specializes in these types of things, and the township has used them in the past. Um, and we engaged in a multi-municipal effort with over twenty municipalities within Chester County, all of whom had their existing agreements with Verizon expiring within a, a twelve-month period. And so uh, it was a joint effort, Cohen Law Group negotiated the new agreement on behalf of this block of municipalities. And so this is the uh, the final product of those negotiations. Um, the highlights are that the main thing is the five percent, we were able to keep that in there. Um, so the, the actual franchise fee is at five percent still. Um, one of the big changes is, um, it's only a five-year agreement. Now, these agreements kicked in the past, have been in the ten to fifteen-year range. Um, five was the longest that Verizon was willing to go with. And that's because of the landscape with all of the new streaming services, which unfortunately, we don't collect any fees or revenue from, but the, the cable landscape is changing very um, drastically and, and quickly. So Verizon didn't feel comfortable and was unwilling to commit anything longer than five years. So that was the best they were able to get out of it. Um, this agreement um, does require an ordinance so that the ordinance was drafted and provided by the Cohen Law Group, it has been advertised. Adoption of the ordinance um, authorizes uh, approval of the new agreement, which Verizon will sign and execute no earlier than six months before the current expiration date. So sometime on or after April fourth, um, we'll sign it and then Verizon will sign it and it'll be, and it'll be done and it'll be in place for the, for the renewal term of five years.
Yeah, I, I've looked through it, it's in order, a couple of minimal changes. There's a lot of changes in the industry, uh, people are going to Netflix and things like that, which are web-based and they're losing uh, some income. So they're complaining about that. Uh, one other thing that's, um, I guess, uh, I was surprised when I first learned it, but they, uh, years ago, the first time through, they passed through this uh, this franchise fee uh, to uh, the property owners and it's, they, they mark it on the bill, you know, franchise fee. So, you know, it's not free money, it's, it is ultimately, you know, coming from uh, our, our customers.
Okay. All right, any uh, comments or questions from the board? EJ, do we have any public comment on this?
No, we do not.
Okay, so there was a motion made, it was seconded. Tim, how do you vote?
Aye.
Susan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mark, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. We have nothing under subdivision and land development, additional business. Uh, EJ, the only thing I have for additional business is, um, do we have any topics for our March? Um, workshop meeting?
Um, the only one that I have, if we were to have a meeting, would be to discuss the, the five, the sewer needs analysis. But it's, you know, the, we could discuss that at the regular April. That, that's going to be on the March Planning Commission meeting for, for discussion. So if, you know, if any of you are able to attend, then you could listen in on that. Um, so I don't have anything else right now for the workshop and that is something that could just wait till the April board meeting if you didn't feel the need to have a workshop.
Okay. If that's the only thing that EJ has, I don't have any topics for um, our workshop. Susan, Mark, Bob, Tim, do you guys have anything that you would like to discuss or talk about or?
I can't think of anything.
No.
I don't.
Okay, well then, it looks like we will not have a board workshop meeting this month. So um, EJ, do you have anything for additional business?
Not that I can think of right at this moment.
All right, does um, anyone on the board have anything for additional business? Nope. All right, let's go to announcements. And uh, Madeline, thank you for typing up this uh, list of announcements for me. Township residents looking for testing and/or vaccine information should visit the Chester County Coronavirus COVID nineteen website. Note that even while Schuylkill Township offices remain closed to the public until further notice, to safeguard our residents' employees' health and safety, all township services continue to function. Staffers are working remotely and responding to emails and voicemails. Building permit applications are being received electronically via the US mail or by drop-off to the delivery bin at the township building. Schuylkill Township twenty twenty-one, uh, real estate tax bills have been mailed, I mentioned that earlier. Um, and we did discuss the Route twenty-three um, closures. I think chief um, did talk about that. The sweeping of township roads is scheduled for April fifth to April ninth, weather permitting. It would be greatly appreciated if residents can move any of their vehicles off the roads as possible. Please put your waste cans and recycling bins on the curb. Please put your waste cans and recycling bins on the curb rather than in the roadway during the hours of 6:30 AM and 5 PM. And today is National Anthem Day. It is celebrated annually on March 3rd to remember and honor the Star Spangled Banner, which was adopted by the United States as the country's national song. The anthem was written by Francis Scott Key and the Four Stanzas Song was officially adopted by the US after President Herbert Hoover signed a congressional order in 1931. I actually knew that, Madeline. Thank you. Okay.
Doesn't Tim have to sing that as part of his initiation at his first occasion?
I don't know, Tim. Do you want to serenade us?
He's got a lot of guts.
Initiation.
I thought maybe he'd pull his wife over and say, here you go. Come on, Nancy, sing it.
Thank you for the offer, Martha.
Okay. Does anyone have any other announcements? No? Public comment. EJ, do we have any comments from the public?
No, nothing else.
Okay. Pending, there's a conditional use hearing for 80 South Second Avenue demolition of the Class II historic structure. EJ, I know we brought this up before. Do we need to take some action on this or no?
Just, just basically a reminder or an announcement that this is scheduled for April 7th, which is the same night. It'll be scheduled during the board supervisor's meeting. So it's a pending item that will be addressed, we'll have a, we'll have a hearing, we'll have a court reporter. And this will be on the, probably likely right at the beginning of the agenda for the April, April board meeting.
Okay. All right. So before I make a motion to adjourn, does anyone have anything else they would like to comment, say, or whatever? Dance or sing? Okay, I will make the motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Everybody seconds it. Okay.
Hi.
Good job. All those opposed.
No one's opposed. All right, everyone. Thank you very much and have a very good evening.
All right. Thanks, guys. Take care.
Nice job.
Thanks, everybody.
We exit.
I'm about to kick you out.